For the City Council Meeting of Wednesday, June 6, 2018 at 9:00 AM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its ground.
Approval of minutes from the council meeting of Wednesday, May 16, 2018, and bills for payment on June 1 and 8, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Are there any repository sales today?
Good morning. My name is Alice Konancheck of 226 Seminole Drive, and I have put in a letter of intent to purchase a parcel on West A Street. I can give you the parcel number or index number if you need it, but just for a visual, it is two parcels east of Mueller's locksmith on West A Street, on the south side of the Speaking with some of the neighbors, I believe a house burned down on the property about a decade ago, and nothing has been there since. It's currently a overgrown junk parking lot, which I plan to clean up the mess, the tires, the rubble, and establish some sort of landscaping routine to keep it down. I'm going to be moving to a house on West Sixth Street so I'll be very close to my primary residence. I'll be able to see it on a weekly basis.
Any council have any questions?
I have a picture of it.
Alex, we just, Kathy Schaff and I just went to a meeting, I think it was a week and a half ago, on the land bank, and so we talked about repository sales. And so somebody advised us to ask everybody, you know, what your plans are and do you have the resources? And I actually, I think I know you have the resources because I know what you've done on Six and Cascade, so we're just kind of like make this a routine, but maybe you could just talk a little bit about your resources to be able to do that. You know, you said what you have in mind, but just, you do have experience, so if you could just reiterate that.
It's a smaller parcel. There is another parcel of land to the east of it that I think could be purchased as well for a larger piece of land. There's also a multifamily on the other side that I believe could use a little extra space. So I think there's a lot of different options that could branch out from this.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody else?
Just once again, what was the address?
I believe the address is 437 West A Street. I can give you the parcel number. Yes.
That's just a single lot, sir?
Yes, sir.
Are there any more questions? Okay, thank you, sir. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Taylor McCallum. I put in a bid for a house on East 10th Street. The address is-
Excuse me, honey. What's your, your address?
1429 Buffalo Road.
Okay.
I put a bid on at a house on 640, 460 East 10th Street. I plan to fix it up for me and my children and to live in it. I am going to clean up the property very well. If you guys could just give me a chance, I am a first-time buyer.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
And I just wanted to ask, you have a plan for how to fix it up? You have sort of a, like, I don't know, a really ballpark estimate of what will be required there?
Yes, kind of, a little bit. I took a look at it, but I'm hoping that I could get it up and running.
Okay.
Are you aware of the options out there for first-time homebuyers? There's some programs out there that you could look into as well?
No, I'm not.
So what she's sort of suggesting to you, maybe you should do that. We appreciate you considering investing in the city of Erie and buying a home here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us to citizens to be heard.
Good morning, Erie City Council. I do have something to pass out. It's going to the Mayor Shemberg's administration, the city of Erie solicitor, and each Erie City Council representation.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Good morning, Erie City Council, Shemberg Administration, fellow citizens in the city of Erie. I'd like to pause for one second to think about the men and women who took the shores of Normandy 74 years ago. In a world of social media, in a world of being online, these brave men and women served our country. They only had one goal in mind: to help our allies, to be united for peace, democracy, love, and compassion towards our fellow man. With that goal in mind, I am passing out what I am trying to do for the LGBT community. My goal in mind is peace, love, and unity, and an inclusive government that not just represents a few, but represents all. That reflects all. This month is Pride Month, and usually I'm going around saying, "Happy Pride!" I stand here today as a proud American, a proud LGBT American, and I thank my lucky stars, and I am blessed to know that 74 years ago today, we had men and women serving for the freedom and liberties I have today. And what I just passed out to you is the County of Erie and New York State Gay Conversion Therapy Ban Ordinance that they passed last year. I have given you the City of Reading's Gay Conversion Therapy Ban this past year. I've given you enough documentation, enough of a draft, and enough statistics and evidence to begin the process for the LGBT community for the future. If it's not happening in the city of Erie, that's good and great, but this is a preventative measure for the future. The future is good for us in the city of Erie, and I'm very proud that we have a very diverse and eclectic representation on City Council. And I'd like to leave you with some words. The future does not belong to those who are content with today, apathetic toward common problems and their fellow man, unlike, timid, and fearful in the face of bold projects and new ideas. Rather, it belongs to those who can blend passion, reason, and courage, and a personal commitment to the great enterprises and ideas of American society. Robert Kennedy. Fifty years ago, he was assassinated. Fifty years ago, he stood up for racial inequality, social justice, and an inclusive America. Fifty years later, we have individuals just like you who are representing the citizens of Erie and have the ideas and have the projects to move forward in a better light. All I'm asking is that we begin the conversation to include all. And yes, the LGBT community, and yes, passing Gay Conversion Therapy Ban in the city of Erie, and to raise the score for the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index. And I invite everyone in the city of Erie to come out to Pride on June 30. Thank you.
Richard Wagner, 4228 State Street. And you'll have to forgive me, I kind of just have some bullet-pointed thoughts that I have been thinking about at home, and I really don't have a good presentation, but I just wanted to get these out to you. And it's more or less about LURDA. Older folks are on fixed income. New LURDA pays taxes, higher maintenance costs. That's, that's the people that own their houses. LURDA, no taxes on improvement, maintenance nonexistent in a new home, so they really do get a big benefit. Resale applies to me and lots of other people that own their homes. Owner can't compete with LURDA, the LURDA incentive, has to take a loss for their homes. And I see that in my community, or my area where I live, that these houses aren't going for what they're worth. They really do take a little bit of a beating on them. At lower interest rates, mortgage and principal equal your tax payment. So when you're giving away that tax bill, you're really cutting someone's cost for housing almost in half. Blighted homes are empty. With 100,000 population, we should have 10,000 empty blighted homes to tear down. Just a thought. We have experienced with LURDA. It didn't really seem to work. And the reason why it didn't, the inner city was ignored, and the circumference was the prime property that got developed. If you bumped up to Mill Creek, they were throwing a house up on it. LURDA inflates the value of those new homes they build. You're actually paying more for less when you buy a LURDA home because they can bump the price up because if you go to the bank, the numbers work out better if you don't have to pay taxes. In a conversation, someone told me that there's 18 million in new taxes from the LURDA. That equates to 600 million in development. I question whether we got 18 million dollars in taxes from the 12 years of LURDA that we've had, because I don't think we've had 600 million dollars' worth of improvement. Two suggestions. If LURDA is enacted, let's ask for a 10-year wage freeze. You have to control the cost of running this government down here. Or how about a 10-year LURDA applied to every property exchange, whether old property or new property? We are trying to attract millennials. Let's incentivize existing home purchases. Lastly, community benefit agreements. I really have a problem with anyone preaching to me about how we're going to incentivize what we're going to do in the city of Erie, and then throw a whole bunch of roadblocks into bringing new businesses into this city and maybe even some new houses. You can't, you just can't put all these obstacles in front of business people. They're business people. They have to make money. They can't, they can't go through a business plan, come up with a cost, and then sit down and be serious about doing a development, and then be confronted with all these other nuances you have to comply with to get the permits you need to do business in the city. It just, it just doesn't make sense. If you're going to go with that LURDA, you can't be a friend of community benefit agreements. It just, it just doesn't make sense to this simple mind that I have. And a couple of other things, and it pertains again back to LURDA. And remember, I was jumping around, sitting there watching TV, writing some notes. You know, I think LURDA, it's, it's, it's being designed and proposed to us to benefit some people that made a mistake already. I think the Sheridan and that other hotel down there in the convention center, I think that was a mistake, and it's be hard to sell the property behind it. Brenda Sandberg, I mean, she didn't create some of the problems, but they can't do much with that McAllister place that they have. And then up on 14th and Peach, that was a John Elliott Redevelopment Authority project, which fell by the wayside. And, and you know, I don't think we should, that's valuable property. If you can't market waterfront property, even in Erie, then there's something wrong with us. So those are just some thoughts I had, and thank you.
Good morning, City Council.
Good morning.
My name is Shawn Michael Struble, address 257 East Third Street. One of the greatest U.S. presidents we ever had said this: "Don't ask what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country." So where I'm going with this is, let's clean up our neighborhoods and be proud of our city. And this, this is, what I'm addressing here today is the litter in the city. From 18th and State down to, close to the Bayfront, from Peach Street down, and then on French, you have trash receptacles, and a lot of them are at the EMTA bus stops. And I've spoke with the EMTA. It's a disaster. Usually there's trash receptacles right next to the bus stops. As a matter of fact, I'd like to praise Mayor Shemberg. The one day I was at 18th and State, and there was, it was a disaster. There were empty liquor bottles all over, trash all over, and I have Mayor Shemberg's cellphone number, and I texted him, and then within 20 minutes, it was cleaned up, okay? I have talked to Doug from Downtown Now, and he states that they only have a limited amount of money. Personally, I think we need to go on a campaign because the first impression of anybody that comes into a city, I believe, is cleanliness. I think there should be a $100 littering fine for anybody that litters, a summary offense. I think there should be a campaign that somehow it should be on the news, the newspaper, the radio, and we should talk about this because we need to have pride in our city. So I, this is the first time I've been up here. I believe it would like take an ordinance or something like that to pass, something like that. Am I correct? Yeah. But it is, it's an ongoing problem, and I try to do my part. When I'm down there, I try to pick something out, up, and I'm not, I'm not perfect. But I think that needs to be addressed, and I appreciate your time today. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Madam President, could I ask, would you be able to give us your contact information, Mr. Struble?
For Downtown Now.
That's how we can get in touch with you?
No, I can give my contact.
Okay, I mean, if you can just give it to somebody up here.
By the way, I'm a veteran. I've been in 30 United States and four countries. I would be willing to do this to get individuals together, like possibly, and I've seen people go down there and, and you know, with bags, I don't know who they are, and possibly do this a couple times a week to pick up the trash. But anyway, my contact number is-
You can just get it to the-
You can just-
I'll have to put it on-
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Hello, council. My name is Julie Minnick, and I am an EMTA board member appointed by the county. But today I am speaking on behalf of my organization, Olive Board Erie. I am the Assistant Executive Director of Olive Board Erie, and we are a transit advocacy organization. I want to let you know that Olive Board Erie is in full support of EMTA's June Public Transit Challenge. The Public Transit Challenge is meant to encourage people who don't, uh, sorry, who don't normally ride the bus to do so. Now, you may be asking yourself, "If I have a car, why would I take the bus?" Think about how many times this thought has crossed your mind. "I wish I was closer to," fill in the blank. Many times, the bus puts you closer to your event. For instance, downtown festivals, which are plentiful in June, the bus brings you right to the center. You don't have to worry about parking or walking to and from your car. With gas prices being over $3 a gallon, the bus is competitive, and all-day pass, which is $3.10 that you buy directly from the driver, costs less than a gallon of gas. Unless you ride all day, as many trips as you want. If you're like many, who are constantly feeding the parking meter, the bus is even of a greater Not only are you saving gas, but you never have to go out to that meter, which increases your productivity, and I would assume not feeding the meter provides you with a calmer Finally, people riding the bus form their own community. They look out for each other. You'll find that your fellow travelers are just getting to work, to school, to an event or a store. If you have questions about a route that you're waiting for, most people are friendly and helpful. This is not the typical story that you hear about the Erie bus, the Erie County bus. Many of the loudest critics don't use EMTA. But when you're driving, doesn't someone cut you off, steal your parking space, block the road? Don't you get caught up in construction? If you ride the bus regularly, you'll have a bad experience. That happens. But doesn't everybody have at least one bad experience in any kind of transportation? It's true, the system isn't perfect, nothing is. But having more riders means more service. And remember, our tax dollars pay for both the roads and EMTA. Build your community, lead by example, ride the bus. And I just want to make a note, I rode the bus here, I have an all-day pass, so I do practice what I preach. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
John Tretter is my name, T-R-E-T-T-E-R. Number one, I went to a meeting to see Sonia Arrington step down. I was shocked that not only did she not step down, no other member of City Council asked her to step down. Number two, went to a meeting to ask Sonia Arrington to step down. Someone gave me two-
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Tretter.
Yes.
We cannot use names. We got a-
Okay.
Council as a body, please.
Can you give your address for the record?
451 West Ninth Street. But that man was confronted by another councilperson, and I believe was assaulted by that councilperson. Defined title 2701, simple assault, an offense defined except as provided under Section 2702 relating to aggravated assault. A person is guilty of assault if he, number one, attempts to cause or intentionally knowingly or recklessly causes bodily injury to another. Number two, negligently causes bodily injury to another with a deadly weapon. Number three, attempts by physical menace to put another in fear of imminent serious bodily injury. I was even more shocked by what happened at that meeting. Number three, City Solicitor Edward Betza made a statement about the city codified ordinance of Erie, Part 1 Administrative Code, Article 112, Rules of Council, 112.10, Order of Business. The Order of Business of Council and the consideration and disposition of matters coming before it shall be as follows: Roll call, pledge of allegiance, and silent meditation, approval of minutes, and payment of bills. Citizens to be heard, any such person addressing the council shall step up to the front of the podium, shall give his or her name and address, and unless further time is granted by council, shall limit his or her address to five minutes. All remarks shall be addressed to council as a body and not to any member thereof. No person other than a member of council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of council, without the permission of the presiding officer. Presiding officer. No questions shall be asked of councilperson except through the presiding officer. Reports from officials, boards, commissions, and other bodies may be received, and also reading of written communications to council on any other matter concerning the city's business or any matter over which council has control. Thank you.
I just came from a medical appointment. This is Freda Tepfer. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. A couple of things. I want to thank Councilmember Murzky for getting on the agenda the item about the LED reader boards. There are issues with LED reader boards and also with street lighting, and I hope as the city moves forward with LED street lighting that they make sure that they're aware of all the concerns for vision and health related to those. As a person with a sensory stimulation sensitivity, and there are many of us, and an older driver, there are many issues related to the LED reader boards. The speed at which the signage changes, the intensity of the light, a lot of those things are actual sensory stimulation triggers. So it's really important that there is adequate regulation of those reader boards. And what I have been communicating with Councilmember Murzky, and also the Code Enforcement Department, as I shared, Mill Creek's and other regulations that have more specificity than what the city has. So I hope that you will pass that resolution. I also want to encourage the city to establish a pedestrian bicycle committee that would specifically advise the city on pedestrian and bicycle issues in planning, consulting, and when there are developments, when there are things that are going to affect pedestrians, maybe to help develop policies on how they deal with construction and pedestrian access. But there is no place now that pedestrians and bicycles can, can do that. And I provided Councilmember Schaaf with some examples of committees in other locations. I was a member of one in Walla Walla, Washington. So I, I hope that that's something that you look forward toward in the future. It's been over four years since the alternative lawn ordinance first came up with the city. The champion for that, Councilmember Brennan, is no longer-
is no longer on the council. I know Councilmember Schaaf is definitely keeping up on that. It seems to be in the black hole of solicitor input. And I hope that that ordinance does not die and does not sit indefinitely. It's been like four, maybe five years since this first was started. As a certified pollinator-friendly gardener with a non-traditional garden that has benefits for stormwater management, air quality, biological diversity, I want to be assured that my garden is consistent with city regulations, and the Alternative Law Ordinance would definitely work towards that. We have a new solicitor contract. Hopefully, we are not letting things die in this black hole. Also, I want to encourage you not to pass any new items that have to do with the McBride Viaduct. As you know, I believe that the city has missed some key steps in the environmental review and the consideration of pollution, traffic, and noise impacts related to this project, especially as it underwent major changes between the study and the project as it went to contract. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. I want to talk to you a little bit about that bond grant money. I remember... I think originally it was meant to help the poor people. But I don't hear nothing about that money no more. You seem to have taken it away from the poor people. And I think that that money was originally... Came in the beans for the poor people. Now, you want these peoples to keep their property up, and a lot of them is keeping their property up the best they can. But they need some help, especially the old folks. Y'all done just took that money out of existence. You're spending it for what you want to spend it for. I see... I remember a couple of peoples went to jail for some missing money. Even at St. Martin's Center, somebody went to jail. Somebody stole some money over there. What I can't understand is... You send... When the money come in, it goes to St. Martin's Center over there. They're distributing the money. If those centers are not qualified to run those centers the way they should be ran, they should be getting their own money. They shouldn't be dolled out like they're kids or something like that. That money should come to the centers and not to St. Martin's Center. I see a lot of improvements over there. Our centers book a tea, the one down on the west side and the one out here on Buffalo Road. Those centers haven't had no work done on them in 20 or 30 years. And that just don't make no sense to me. Those centers should be worked on. They are deteriorating. If you don't take care of your house, it's going to go down. Those centers are going down. I don't understand. You should... Somebody ain't doing their job. Somebody just is not doing their job. Somebody told me a while back that they came down here to see about getting some money for their center. And they were threatening. They told them that, "You keep on talking, you won't get no money." I'd like to know who told them that. Because that ain't no way to talk to nobody. You won't be getting no money. Hey, that person shouldn't be in that job. He shouldn't have that job because he don't know how to talk to people. You got to talk to people like you got some sense, a little bit anyway. And when you get in that position, you should know how to talk to people. I want y'all to look into that and see what you can do about those centers. Those centers are going down, down. You take the center on the west side over there, it needs some work bad. It needs some work bad. Even the one up on 18th and Holland there, that center needs some work bad. I haven't looked the one over out there on Buffalo Road. But it ain't no work been done on it. They need some work bad. And y'all need to get them some money. It takes money to repair those centers. And the longer they stay like they are, the more it's going to take. The more... Because they're not going to get better if don't nobody do no repair work. The center can't repair itself. I wish y'all would look into this, please. Thank you for your time.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard and takes us into ordinances for final passage.
Ordnances for final passage. Council File 15628, Official Ordinance Number 192018. An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of a stop sign at one intersection, Trask Avenue and West 42nd Street. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Winarski, the Council File, Ordinance File Number 15628, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 192018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 192018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 15629, Official Ordinance Number 202018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,666,548 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of McBride Viaduct East Avenue Bridge. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15629, and now known as Official Ordinance Number 202018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 202018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council Files 15630, Official Ordinance Number 212018. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from PA Emergency Management Agency for firefighting, training, and rescue equipment. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Bill Number 15630, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 212018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 212018, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordnances for first reading. Council File 15631. An ordinance vacating the public right-of-way known as Federal Avenue and approving the agreement between the city of Erie and the Erie Zoological Society to transfer the right-of-way to Erie Zoological Society for the greater public good. By Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15631. Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15631 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15632. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $251,291 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Emergency Solutions Grant 18 Projects. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15632. Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15632 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15633. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $904,894 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Home 18 Projects. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15633. Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15633 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15634. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $3,86,611 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and $9,729.38 program income for a total of $3,096,340.38 for the Community Development Block Grant 18 Projects. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Number 15634. Having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15634 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. That'll take us to new business?
Madam President?
Yes.
Vote to move the balance of the agenda?
Second.
Are there any separations?
I would like to separate Number 5 and Number 6.
Of new business?
You said 5 and 6?
Of new business?
Yes, of new business, yes.
That's new business, right?
Yes, new business, yes.
Madam President? I would request that Item Number 4 on New Business be tabled. That is an easement agreement. We do not have the final legal description, and it would be premature at this time for the city to approve Number 4.
I'll separate 4, and then can we separate the transfer?
Yep. Any more separation? Moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Do you want me to read 4 that needs to be tabled? Or does somebody want to make a motion on it?
So moved. I'll move to table Number 4 under New Business.
Okay.
Second.
The reason it's being tabled, as the solicitor said, is that we didn't receive all the documentation necessary to execute this, correct?
That's correct. The easement form is acceptable. I just, to protect the city, we have to make sure that the legal description is accurate.
Okay, by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. Motion to table Resolution Number 4. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaaf, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Well, that motion will adopt 7 to 0. That is tabled. Okay, by Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. Resolve by the Council of the city of Erie that the City Council authorized and direct the city solicitor to draft an ordinance establishing a special City Council Committee to review the process of determining requests for proposals, RFPs, prior to awarding of bids or legislation authorized from council for acceptance. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I brought this resolution up to start the conversation with the solicitor regarding the bid process. In the six years that I've been on council, I know of five instances where things have come to council the day of, and we had to vote on it. And two of them were the BIU contract for new construction inspection. Two of them were the BIU contract for rental inspection. One was the stray dog contract. And the intention of this is another set of eyes on the RFP process, a set of checks and balances so that council knows going into something what they're voting on. I think that's important, that we know what we're voting on. And rather than be reactionary, which is the process now, where council gets it after everything else is done, and they're saying, "Vote it up or down, whether you like it or not," it would allow council, a set of eyes and ears, to come back, at least on this, a committee. And what I'm envisioning is the liaison to purchasing and his or her committee people, his two committee people, having access to looking at that documentation from the RFPs, so that council is aware of what they're voting on. And we have somebody to go to, to speak to those issues from our body. And again, like I said, rather than be reactionary, this would allow council to be proactive. And it would be in line with the new administration's spirit of cooperation with council. And it allows us to be part of the solution instead of part of the problem.
Mrs. Chairman? I support Councilman Mersky's resolution. When I was Controller, I saw the need for it many times. And council, in the past, has given the Controller numerous powers to look over contracts and be notified of them far in advance of their acceptance by council. And it added another set of eyes to the process. And I think, just the case, as you mentioned alone, another set of eyes with a different perspective could have prevented that from happening. Now, we're not saying we're going to micromanage the process. But I think we need to look at it because many times, when it comes down to our desk, they're loaded with problems that no one ever thought of. And then at the last minute, we're shuffling, trying to correct them, or we're making a decision that's not based on the public good. So for that reason, I'm proud to second Bobby's ordinance resolution and send it forward to be put in codified form. And Bob, if I may make a suggestion, maybe we would like to include the controller in that also.
Madam President, I said in the caucus, I'm voting no on this, not because it might not be a good idea. And actually, if it ends up getting final approval, I guess I would be on that committee because I am the liaison to the purchasing department. I just double-checked to make sure. However, the only information I had about this was what was on the agenda and some information I asked for from the city clerk's office, which is what happened in Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh City Council approved such a committee because of an investigation by public source into the way the software contract was awarded there. Pittsburgh City Council created the committee though after a lot of discussion. I sat here just a couple of weeks ago when we were told by some of the same council members that they didn't have enough information about the change to the rental inspection ordinance. Now, I feel like I'm in the same position. I do not know what the rush is to vote on this today, but that's why I'm voting no. But if it comes to pass that the liaison to the purchasing department is on this committee, I would obviously do my best to do the best job there. Thank you.
Is there any more comments?
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. All right, this resolution will pass six to one. By Mr. Murzky, seconded by Ms. Kotowski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that city council respectfully request the planning commission to consider implementing additional sign code regulations specifically related to LED reader boards on their speed of message changes, brightness and time of use, and refer back to city council with recommendations thereon. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
As Freda Tepfer said, I put this on at her request after consulting with the, she gave me, gave me the Mill Creek ordinance. And the reason, pardon me, excuse me, the reason for this is as we see technology advance, more and more signs are becoming LED reader boards, not just from advertisers, but also in businesses and schools. And so with that, I think that it's prudent for us to have the planning commission look at that as a potential for recommendations to bring back to us. And that's really what this is, is for the planning commission to consider implementing code regulations and then bring that back to council for recommendations. And I think that in doing so, those that are elderly or have bad vision, impaired vision, those who have sensory, hypersensory issues, you know, those could be addressed. But also, some of them are just really, really bright and it does blind you a little bit. I know Mill Creek had to do that at the mall. They had to turn it down because it was too bright and people were, it was causing accidents. So I think it's a good thing to have the planning commission look at that and bring it back to us with recommendations.
Any more discussion?
Madam President, I also agree with Freda and Bob. As an educator, I had children who have oversensitivity and had to adjust the classroom, sometimes too many things in a classroom. There are so many people out there that do have eye concerns and I'm sure like the ophthalmologists and that could agree that there are oversensitivity, stimulations, eye concerns and some of that, too much brightness is not necessarily a good thing, just so that people can see your business.
Madam President, I separated this. I am going to vote yes for this, but I want people to be aware of two things. One is that there are businesses in Erie which do circuit boards for LED lighting. So I think it'd be really useful to make sure that the planning commission consults with some Erie-based businesses on this. I know about this because I sit on a scholarship committee that interviews kids at Erie High and also at Erie County Vo-Tech. And some of those students get co-op jobs at some of the businesses which produce the circuit boards. Also, I, in my research to find out about other cities that have these types of ordinances, I just Googled LED boards, yeah, LED lighting, and I found out that Howard Industries in Erie has, if you look at their website, they have a really interesting product out there which has a patent pending, which is, uses LED lighting at pedestrian intersections. I didn't have a chance to call Howard to find out all about this product, but when we, Freda, who brought the LED situation to our attention, talked about having a pedestrian committee, this product looked really interesting to me in terms of how it alerts people to, you know, crossing the street. If I looked at it correctly, it actually cast a light across the walkway to help pedestrians get across the streets. So I just want to urge the planning commission to consult with local businesses to see not just about the downside of LED, but also the upside. And I guess maybe there's a third reason, you know, LED lighting also does save energy and that's really important in terms of climate change. So that's why I separated it.
Is there any more discussion?
Roll call, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And that resolution will pass seven to one, or seven to zero.
He added a.
Added a person. By Mrs. Arrington, seconded by Mr. Murzky, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that the following amounts be transferred in the office of the mayor. Five thousand from seasonal wages and 10,000 from seasonal wages, two different account numbers, into 15,000 for seasonal wages. Discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just discussed this, I separated this because I had a question and I apologize to the administration for not doing this before the meeting. I just wanted to know what the 15,000 is going to be used for in the mayor's office.
We've brought on, we've brought on three interns and we will also be getting an Americor Vista. With the Americor Vista, we keep that person for two years and I believe we have to pay a stipend of $4,000 if I'm not mistaken. And then the three interns, we have one that has a master's in, is working on a master's in urban planning, that's a local resident, that's helping with Erie refocused. And then the other two are helping Aaron Lonkey with setting up the Sounds of Summer series, working on Celebrate Erie, working on the press conferences and that kind of thing.
Okay, and that was transferred from?
From the summer, the summer program, summer jobs program. So, yeah, we had the students apply through the summer jobs program and interviewed several candidates and picked the ones who had the best skills.
Thank you.
Roll call, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will pass seven to zero and that'll take us to committee reports, Mrs. President.
We'll start with Mr. Murzky.
Thank you, just a few things to report. I just wanted to remind everybody that school lets out on Friday for Erie Public Schools, so please be aware when you're driving that there may be young people out at hours that you're not used to them being out during the day. And I also remind the parents that we do have our curfew. Please follow the curfew. It's also not just to, you know, keep the kids, it's to keep the kids safe. That's the ultimate goal behind it. With the Convention Center Authority, Convention Center Authority met, and if you saw the article in the paper, there are, you know, attendance is down at some things. However, they have cut costs so that their budget will be in line. I want to thank the Convention Center Authority. They've contributed over $340,000 to the city in terms of taxes through the amusement tax and other taxes and fees. So they are contributing in that sense and also they upkeep other properties. All of their properties are very well lit. They put in additional lighting around the convention center, or not the convention center, pardon me, Erie Insurance Arena. They have additional lighting to keep that area safe. That was at no cost to the city. And they have some things in the works that I'll be discussing in the future. We also are pleased that work progresses on the Oyster Bar down at the Convention Center property. And with that, you know, there's delays, but he's hoping to be opened this autumn. So this fall, he should be open, you know, transferring the liquor license and getting the business up and running. John Melody has done a fantastic job with Tap House and his other businesses. He knows restaurants in Erie and I'm looking forward to it. He said it's going to be something completely different for Erie and we're looking forward to that and it'll include a rooftop seating area overlooking the water. It should be really nice. And then finally, just, you know, to let people know that if you have any concerns or questions, it is paving season, there is construction. We'll do the best that we can to get that information out to people and ask the administration if they, now that we have a social media director, if he could put that out on the city's social media. I think that's important. I was coming down Peach Street today and it might take him coordinating with Pendott as well because Peach Street was blocked off at 29th Street. That's why I was a little late getting to the caucus meeting today. The traffic was backed up about four blocks. So if we could get that out to the public, I think that's important, especially with the summer season upon us. Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, Kathy Schaff and I attended a workshop sponsored by the Council of Governments on land banks. It was a really amazing afternoon because what, what we learned, we learned all about how the tax sale processes work, but the most exciting thing was hearing from a director of a tri-county land bank in Allegheny County and a woman who's worked with the Pennsylvania Housing Alliance from Philadelphia and learning about how the tools of the land bank can work and the various positive benefits of having, having a land bank that's up and running. As you know, we are, I guess, between two land banks, the county land bank and the city land bank, and the city is hoping to get funding from the county to actually get its land bank being able to function. So we learned not just about tools to fight blight, but also how to develop properties in a good way. Kathy will probably remember a lot more about what we learned, but we took a lot of notes and we made good contacts, I think, for building relationships with people around Pennsylvania who are working on this issue. I was really excited to have Mr. Struble come up to the microphone to talk about litter because Kathy and I had also talked just a few weeks ago about trying to launch some type of anti-litter or beautification campaign in the city of Erie. We're going to go to, there's a new exhibit that has just opened at Trek about plastic pollution. So we're going to meet there with somebody who works on environmental issues and come back with some ideas. And I got Mr. Struble's contact information. He talked about the bus stops and I know I had the same experience. I'm an usher at the Seawolves and I was up on the upper deck and I looked over at the bus stop on 10th Street. And I think, I mean, there's many examples of, especially of plastic stuff blowing around downtown, but when I saw that, that bus stop, and I don't think that there is a trash receptacle at that particular bus stop. So we're, we're going to be coming up with some kind of anti-litter campaign. The third thing is I've been meeting with Nikan, who is the outreach coordinator in the administration, working with, you know, the refugee population, immigrants and new Americans on ways that Erie can be declared a welcoming community. I think one of the good things about going through this process with Nikan is that the idea about being welcoming and inclusive doesn't just apply to refugees and new Americans and immigrants, but it also can address some of the issues that we've heard about in Erie, you know, about inequities, about equitable development. We went to the Jefferson last week and heard the woman from the Heinz Foundation talking about how to create an equitable city. So if you commit yourself to being equitable and open and welcoming, that will be inclusive for everybody. So there's some really positive things happening, as always, in Erie and I think in particular on becoming a welcoming community.
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, Madam President. I would like to send a special thank you out to the Erie Police Department, the chief, Deputy Nolan, who has offered and continue to provide some security up at the basketball court on East 19th Street. They approached me and they were there for the last 20-something years. And their presence, I'm sure, has not only decreased, but we have zero incidents, any major incidents. And you're going to have guys arguing, pushing, you know, on the court because of a call or a no-call by officials. That's acceptable. It's acceptable because I've been in that position many times as a player, but I want to thank them. Also, I need to thank Mr. Dave Moverhill, Public Works Director. I'm on the phone with him quite often regarding paving. Do we have enough money to pave because our streets took a beating this winter? He's on top of that. The schedule is very difficult to do, but he's handling that quite well. I want to thank him for that. I'd like to report that we have an overabundance, if that's the right term, of young men and young women who plan to participate in the league. We had 280 young men register to play in the league this summer at East 19th Street and we had 85 young ladies register. We also had, or have, 78 registered to play at Bayview Park and that's growing as well. So our goal is to keep them active as long as we can, really from 5:15, five days a week, to about 9:30 or 10 o'clock, they'll be playing. And we have our own security there as well, all the coaches as part of the security team. And we plan to have a very good time. 280 was more than I expected, but I'm not turning them down. Registration for these 19th Street has closed. I'm not accepting anymore at that point, but the registration for Bayview Park is still open for boys and girls and that will close at the end of this week. Schedules will be completed for 19th Street by Friday and we'll send a copy to the city, of course, to the city police. And we'll put it on our website, spoonsleague.org. And we invite everyone to come up and see what we have. We average about, I would say, 150, 250 spectators from time to time and it grows when it's championship time. So I want to thank everyone who has supported the league for the kids. It's not for me, it's for the kids. My goal is to keep them out of trouble. And I want to thank the administration for their continued support. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning, everyone. Did attend the LERTA roundtable meeting with the administration, some members of city council, local businesses, Erie School District, and also representatives from the District, and also representatives from the county. As mentioned before, and I think in a full agreement at this meeting, is a citywide LERTA, 100% citywide LERTA would be advantageous. But with that being said, we're still not sold on the Bayfront area. Possibly, maybe on the Bayfront, after more discussions, there could be different options, a five-year, a prorated-type LERTA in that area. But there again, with more discussion, that would have to be determined. The county appears to be in full agreement with the LERTA. The school district, due to their financial woes, may not be in full commitment, but at least some percentage of a commitment where they have to work their financials out and see if they can be a player in this. Naturally, a program like this only works, or works the best when all three taxing bodies are involved. But we look forward to additional discussions in the future and see where we're going to move forward from there. I was involved with the Emergency Vehicle Predemption System. It was a, the old-time RALCO is what it was called. They had to have a grant put in by the end of May, and unfortunately, to receive that grant, they needed the city of Erie be one of the partners in it. As we are in, once again, full agreement with getting our street lights or our traffic lights in order for emergency vehicles. I know you come up to one of those, and you'd see the light flash in there, and you know you might be sitting there a little while. It does save lives and does do the cause for emergency vehicles and saves on accidents. But at this time, we had nothing in the city budget to be a full partner in this. But come the fall here, after talking with Dave Mulvahill, we're going to try to see if we can come up with some funding and some matching funds that they may be able to get through a grant. Ms. Schoff reminded me of our summer rec program. I did not receive a flyer. I'll let her get into more of the details of it. The only thing I stress, like I do every year, as I've done every year on council, is parents, grandparents, please, 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 get these kids signed up for some of the projects or some of the activities. Gives them a place to go, some meals to eat, and gives them a reason to get up in the morning. So the only thing I ask is, please, get these kids signed up and get them there for some of these summer rec programs. Just have more than I thought. The bulky item collection, the pilot program for having our city refuge be year-round or at least another three months this summer, people, please, got to realize, the same rules apply as the spring cleanup, but don't, please, don't, large appliances, automotive items, electronics, hazardous waste items, construction materials, same rules. Please, don't do that. As well as, you have to actually call and schedule the pickup for your garbage night. So it's not going to be clean out the basement and put a pile of unwanted items from end to end to your property. This is going to be enforced a little stricter. And bottom line, just try to take advantage of it without abusing it, and just please follow the rules. On a lighter note, I have family coming in from out of town this weekend, just sending on Erie PA. My niece Melissa Winarski is going to be married this weekend to Trevor. Just proud to say they bought a home here in the city, and they reside in the city. I just want to say congrats and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning. I continue to be busy. I am excited about Liz and I, and the gentleman that is willing to hop on board with us to pick up trash whenever I'm out, even if I'm in my Sunday clothes and I'm walking, I'll pick up trash. And it really makes a difference. I really do believe so. So I'm really excited about that. I am so excited about this program, and it's not just for kids, it's for adults and all family members. And they are available right here at City Hall. And thank you to all the people who sponsored everything, all the programs that have been going on for so many years. The theater program this year is doing the new Gershwin musical comedy, Crazy for You. The registration is June 11th, stopping in anytime between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. Rehearsals are June 12th at 9:00 AM. The performance, August 1st, 2nd, and 3 at 7:00 PM. It's all here. There's midday dance breaks at Perry Square, Thursdays, 12 noon to 1:00 PM, June 21st through August 2nd. It has the sounds of music, all of the basketball programs, tennis programs, swimming programs. You name it, we have it. The YMCA is sponsoring so much, and there's so much out there. Really, great time for living in the summer in the city of Erie. I'm just really over-the-top excited about everything. The concert series, everything. This is the go-to book. So get out there, get a program, go online. And it's free, and that's me. That's the way I brought my kiddos up. I'm on the committee for the Merri Masala, run by Lynn Johnson. He is getting a great multicultural event Saturday, July 14th, at our own Perry Square, 11 to 5:00 PM. There'll be a parade at noon, just a short distance from Fourth Street on State up to Perry Square that will be at noon. And there'll be One World Tribe in music and events and multicultural experiences for families. And that sounds like a lot of fun. So save the date for July 14th. And I went to Cruisin' Cars on Monday with my husband. He is a car fanatic for antique vehicles and things. So we enjoyed our visit down there. Erie has so much now that it's summertime. I went down to the Rib Fest for three days and talked with the people there. It's a great opportunity to be outside when the weather is nice, talk with people, enjoy life. And I was outside yesterday at Perry Square, and there was a person, unfortunately, had a sad thing, but was posting on trees. And you cannot tack things on trees. So perhaps we could get like a communal sign place where people could go and know that there's a communal message outdoors, so they don't have to post on trees. I'm all aboard for the LED lighting. I've, you know, in the several cities that you go to, not all cities have all these bright lights. Some all have their signs low in certain areas where you have to look low, and there's just like a little glow. So I think there'll be good things about that. Karen Abrams spoke May 31st at the Jefferson Society, and she talked about her life story and talked about how we can bring equality to Erie. And I was really, I really liked those lectures at the Jefferson Society. Thank you to the people who bring them in. And she had six points that she herself concluded her talk with, and I'm just going to share them with you. Number one, never forget the kids that you grew up with. You know, everyone, you know, started someplace. Number two, all great things are preceded by chaos. Number three, everyone makes mistakes. You have to own up to them. Number four, be brave, speak up. In her story, she grew up in Harlem in the Bronx of New York, very poor situation. But her mother had the courage and the strength to speak to the people who helped her family get out of that situation. And her mother was a big role model in having the courage to get up and speak, and that's so very important. So be brave, speak up. Number five, have empathy. Listen, care. So many times, we're in such a rush, 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 and we don't take the time to listen. And number six is to celebrate. Celebrate so that when you do have the hard times, you can remember the good times to get you through those hard times, but celebrate the little things. I went, did I say I went to the Water Authority meeting, and their water convention is here at the Bayfront Convention Center at the beginning of September, and it's a really big thing. All the people from the state are coming in, and that is really going to highlight the Erie area. They're very, very excited about that at the Water Authority. So that's going to be a big highlight for Erie, bringing people in to see all what Erie has to offer during their water convention this year. Thank you.
As Jim mentioned earlier, we was talking about RALCO. I think one thing we should consider very seriously is the fact that all the ambulance routes run through the city. And many times, I've been at intersections where it's really lucky we didn't have an accident, or something even worse than just a single-car accident. We, we one time were the leader in RALCO, but now we're at the end of the barrel. It's embarrassing. With a gentleman earlier talked about LERTA, yes, there is something wrong on the waterfront. If it's so valuable, why did it take Nick Scott 20 years to develop his portion, and why is a GF property still vacant? The answer was given loud and clear by many of the people that sat in on our roundtable, and that was, they need LERTA, and they need other forms of enticement. Other communities are doing it. That's why they're moving ahead, and we're not. At one time, when we had the 10-year LERTA under a previous mayor, I have to admit, it did work. And when we saw the numbers, yes, we did gain 15 to 18 million dollars more in tax revenue. The problem was, as was pointed out, is that we lost it equally on the other side because the property's not being maintained. So, you know, to those, including the school district, I would tell them that, you're not going to lose any revenue, but you're not going to gain any. I use my example very simply. The only thing preventing me from building a garage right now onto my house would be if you gave me 10 years to amortize that construction, and I didn't have to pay taxes on it, you probably would see a garage on my house and other, my other neighbors doing other repairs. And in 10 years, you would get more tax money back from me. Otherwise, it's going to continue to go the way it is. And when you talk about the green zone, and I live in the green zone, it's starting to show signs of deterioration. So we have to do something. And we can't be, you know, we, it showed that even in the old days, under the previous mayor, it did work on 18th Street in the center city. I agree with Bob about street closing notifications. There's nothing more frustrating than trying to come to work and not knowing if 7th Street is open, Perry Square is open. Today, I come down, and there was a temporary roadblock. I'm trying to remember what street it was on. 7th Street. Again, temporary construction. They put a sign 15 feet from the truck. Well, you know, I had buses battling for the same space I had. I think we need to design an ordinance. I'm going to introduce one, based on maybe what other cities do, that when we start granting construction projects, and we're going to have a lot of them, we need to notify people on arteries adjacent to the project. If you're coming down Parade Street, and it's apparent that Erie Insurance is going to be working on 7th Street, and Hammond's going to be working on their projects, and we're going to have other projects, we need to know, if we're coming down a major artery, don't go down the street, because, you know, it's going to be subject to closure. They do that in other towns. We don't. I don't know why, but we don't. Talking about the litter, nothing, that is really appalling. I mean, you talk about litter on State Street and the bus stops. Take a ride down Parade Street. Now, it's improved a little bit. They've started to clear some of the cars, but we have cars parking on sidewalks. We have people that actually put concrete barriers obstructing wheelchairs. Nothing has been done about that. We have, I have numerous complaints and pictures that show you that now we have a, I guess, I don't remember passing an ordinance on the new truck stop in the truck depot that we open in front of the East Erie Turners. But semis are not to be parked in front of there, but yet, on the weekend and holidays, there they are. And if you drive behind the post office, we got a truck terminal opening up there, too. I'm trying to think of that road back there. Why do we do this? What, I mean, what is so hard? We can't find one police officer to tag them? I mean, this is embarrassing. If we're going to change the city's atmosphere, I don't want to see semis parked on, I've been notified now, there's one parked on, I got to find the street, I got to talk to the person. It's actually parked on the sidewalk, a tractor-trailer. Now, they won't put up with that in Mill Creek, I'm sure, and they won't, we shouldn't put up with it. And where's code enforcement? They keep telling me they, they're only reactionary. I did a ride as I come in from Ellentown last week on vacation, and just driving down Pine Avenue, and then driving down Parade Street to come to City Hall to pick up my mail, the high grass, the weeds, the other violations, I mean, do they, do they see these things, or it's only me? I mean, do I have to turn them in? And by the way, I did call Moss with a whole bunch of them, and I want to thank them. But my God, a councilman should not have to call, and neither should citizens. If they're driving around doing their job, they should be, they got to see what I see, which is weeds and debris and couches all over the place. It's embarrassing. Take, I would tell any citizen, you want to know what I'm not a towner thinks, clear your mind completely. Go to the airport, go to the end of the little cafeteria, order a cup of coffee, clear your mind, take about a half an hour, clear your thoughts, and act like you've never been to Erie. Then take a ride over 12th Street, and come down Parade, or come down State Street, and tell me what you see. If you can say you're happy with it, God bless you. I would suggest to the administration that, I received numerous calls about, you can probably put on your website, there's confusion on the fireworks ordinance. A lot of people think now, since the state has allowed fireworks to be purchased, they feel like, you know, they may be allowed to fire them, where there still is Commonwealth law and city law saying no. So if you can clarify that on the website, I think that would help a little bit. And finally, Memorial Day just passed, and we didn't have a meeting. And it was my extreme honor to put flags on all the veterans' graves, as I do every year with my legion group. So I'm, just a little message out there to people that if you can find a grave that doesn't have a marker or a flag, we sometimes miss them, or they're not marked properly. If you want to contact me, I'll make sure you personally get a flag. I can't guarantee you a marker. I can try. I have a few. We get those from the county. But if you'd like, you can call me, or our media can post that if they like. That, you know, sometimes we do miss them, but our intent is to have every veteran have a flag and a marker on his grave. So with that, I close out. Thank you.
I would like to congratulate all the 2018 graduates in Erie County, and good luck on the next chapter in their lives. And also, too, for the parents, we have a lot of different programs going on this summer. Please find something for your child to do. If we want a safe summer, we need to find something for your children to do. And I would also like to thank Mr. Witherspoon for the, for his basketball league. That's an awesome program, and the 300-and-something kids, those 300-and-something kids, we know that's going to be busy. So the key here to having a safe and a blessed summer is keep So, the key here to having a safe and a blessed summer is keep our children busy, because if they busy, they won't be getting in trouble. And with that said, Teresa, you have anything?
I have no report.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just going to touch on a few things. In response to a letter that we received from the president of the Greater Erie Alliance for Equality, we will be flying the pride flag on June 30th for Pride Fest. Also, I want to remind everybody that the deadline for Erie, to apply to be an Erie police officer is June 15th. Applications are available at policeacademy.merseyhurst.edu. And, you know, we're really trying to recruit, we're actually down a few officers right now. Our current list runs out at the end of August, and so this, this new list will start September 1st, and then it will run for the entire year, and then we will test again next year through Mercyhurst. Also, I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald left. I wanted to actually say that this year, we, we gave more to the community centers than we have in the recent, in the recent past, in quite a long time, actually. Our challenge this year was that our HUD allocation was changed for public services. So, rather than being able to give 22.6% of percent of our HUD funding to public services, we were only allowed to give 15%. And so, we actually cut some money from city services that, that classifies public services in order to make sure that we were funding the community centers. We actually have conference calls coming up with our staffs of our U.S. senators that work with HUD and CTBG to see if we can have some kind of waiver, or, you know, if we can do something to, to change that allocation. But we don't have any news on that yet. In terms of the bulky item pickup, I just wanted to touch on a little bit more on what Jim said. As he mentioned, caller, people have, residents have to call in, that's 72 hours in advance of their regular pickup night, and they have to get a confirmation number, so you can't just leave a message, because we have to make sure that we only have about 40 pickups each night, depending on the number of items that people have. The maximum is three items, and you have to say when you call, what you're putting out. You can't call and reserve the time and not know what you're putting out at the time of your call. Let's see. The, the number to call is 870-1550. And again, we will be running this as a pilot June through August, and then at the end of August, we will reassess, see how it went, and then make a determination going forward. And then finally, on the, on code enforcement, I can tell you, I know that they are swamped with calls on the grass and the highways. It seems like winter ended and summer started, and the grass has just been going crazy, and we're actually down one code enforcement officer right now. We, we lost a code enforcement officer, and we've hired another one, but that one can't start for, I think, another couple of weeks yet. And so, they're, they're going nonstop. Moss Sala and our, and our Citizen Response Center is taking calls, and he copies me on everything, and they're, they're coming in and they're going out to the code enforcement officers, and they're responding as quickly as they can, but it's, there, there's a lot. You're, you're correct. We're working on it. Thank you.
Mr. Betson?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. That adjourns our city council meeting.
The city council adjourns at 10:45 AM. Mrs. Arrington.